Okay, we're recording and we're unmuted.
It's gonna begin this evening with the election of the chair and the vice chair. I would ask for nominations for the chair. Other nominations for chair. Okay, not, um, motion by Kevin Gregory, seconded by Kevin Libby, uh, votes, those who are in agreement, yes? No other election?
We have to cease the nominations, bro.
Yes, I thought it was gonna go, there's nobody else for that, okay? So cease nomination for, what do we have to do? Win this one, yeah, um, cease nomination? Thank you. Second name? And that we did, and vote to cease nominations? Sorry about that. Okay, um, nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Dawn.
Other nominations for vice chair?
Make a motion.
Yeah, motion to cease? Um, vote everyone for, uh, to cease? Alright. The motion to elect Warren Stewart as. Don Raymond, sorry, Don Raymond? Motion to elect Don Raymond as vice chair? Alright. We have a new board chair, welcome Warren and a new vice chair, welcome Donnie. Now, could be less mistakes. Alright, thank you for all of that.
So now we go on to committee assignments? Budget and. Okay, what is the finance committee?
That's a whole.
That's a whole board?
Alright.
Building and grounds committee? Right now is Kevin Libby and Dawn Raymond.
Yes.
You both still want that?
Sure.
Okay.
The whole board on the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Cooperative committee? Uh, Dawn and I are on that. Sorry Julie, I think I'm gonna stay on.
Go ahead, go ahead, that's an easy one.
Yeah. Dropout committee, that's Kevin Gregory and Kevin Libby.
House figure. Yeah.
You, uh.
Yeah, Julie wanted to go on that.
Okay. So dropout committee is going to be Kevin, G. And Julie. Negotiations committee is Kevin Gregory and myself. Kevin, do you wanna stay on?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to stay on, but I think that's. Policy committee, Kevin Libby and Dawn Raymond?
Julie's number one. Julie and I.
Okay, so it's gonna be Kevin Libby? I don't have, it's, I'm glad, so glad your name isn't Kevin.
Right, right. Me too, every day.
That's everyone. Technology committee is Dawn and Warren. Dawn would like to stay on, Julie, is that something you'd like to do?
Uh, in your place?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Not that, not that technology is, you know, I don't say. Say, yes, I'd like to.
You can put a computer on, right?
Yes, I can. I was gonna say, that's what I was getting at, but like, I don't wanna like be, you know, throw my feet back.
Look, it was only one time, I drove three computers in one meeting, so we did good. Uh, technology, no, we just did that one. Uh, stakeholders. Is Kevin Gregory and myself. Kevin, do you wanna stay on stakeholders?
Just for the S M R?
Give me one more year.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. We, I was, I'm not sure.
Oh, really?
What?
Was it Kevin Gregory?
Yeah, it was Kevin Gregory.
Well, that's, I can only read what my notes said.
Yeah. Yeah.
Go with it.
Alright. Do you have all the changes?
Yeah, and you have all the changes, yes.
Okay, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes. Um, what you see in yellow, um, the policy committee met and we went through all of these policies, but we had some additional information we needed to seek out from individuals. And with the snow day yesterday, we was not able to get the information in time for these to be printed. So everything that you see in yellow is an adjustment, um, and they will show up later in our, in our minutes, in our agenda rather. Makes sense? So we'll, basically, we'll be doing them at another time.
Public comment? I guess I'm gonna start off tonight, Brian and Sandra, how are you hearing us? Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine.
Yeah, it's been better Warren, but it's, it's, okay.
Now, Brian, where you're on the newspaper, do you have to go through the tapes? Or the Zoom meeting, whatever you wanna call it, and listen to it again afterwards?
Uh, I can, yeah.
But have you done that lately?
Lately, I haven't, no.
We were just wondering about the quality of the recordings because a couple people have told us that they're hard to understand. So we're just kind of wondering the source of that issue.
Yeah, I mean, on my end, if one person is talking, it's not bad. If multiple people talk, then it gets a little bit jumbled.
Okay, thank you.
So if we try to talk over each other, we have a problem?
That'd be a fair assessment, yeah.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any public comment? At this time? Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting November seventh, two thousand twenty, being in Arizona Michigan. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five all? David, you wanna do the payroll warrant, please?
I move to direct the superintendent of schools authorized payment on town treasure, each body listed here in the South sedicates each name, gave the school payroll warrant, P I twenty-four dash eleven in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. P I twenty-four, uh, eleven D in the amount of seventy-three thousand, six ninety-two, thirty-five. Um, main perus twenty-four dash eight in the amount of thirty-three thousand, thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Main perus twenty-four dash nine in the amount of one hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents on November twenty-second, twenty, twenty-three. P I twenty-four dash twelve in the amount of one hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. P I twenty-four dash twelve D in the amount of seventy-three thousand, three thirty-one and fifty-six cents. Main perus twenty-four dash ten in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and fifty-two cents. Main perus twenty-four dash eleven, the amount of three hundred forty-five dollars and forty-three cents. And main perus twenty-four dash twelve in the amount of three hundred forty-five dollars and forty-three cents on the seventh, seventh, twenty, twenty-three.
I'll say it again.
There a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five all? Kevin, you wanna do payroll, what's going?
Make a motion to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment of the town treasure to each body listed here in the South sedicates each name contained in the school payroll warrant, S A twenty-four dash nine, student accounts in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. A P twenty-four dash fifteen in the amount of thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars, two cents. And A P twenty-four dash sixteen, the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, S A twenty-four dash ten student accounts in the amount of two hundred and forty-two dollars. And S A twenty-four dash eleven student accounts in the amount of seven hundred and forty-one dollars, eighty-eight cents. A P twenty-four dash seventeen in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-one cents. They already done. And A P twenty-four dash eighteen in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. And A P twenty-three dash fifty-two F Y twenty-three, the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars on seven, seven, twenty, twenty-three.
I'll say it again.
Leave the motion.
I was joking. The A P twenty-three, ask it every time, are we getting close to being any? Uh, bells that we're gonna get?
Yes.
It's gonna be a twenty-four year shortly.
Yes, yes, we're getting close.
Alright.
Obviously, you're gonna have that.
Yes, we are, we're getting close.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Five all? Alright, see if the board will approve a three-year busing contract extension for Mr. Bragton? Motion? Julie?
What, second?
No.
No, motion, motion, read it, is what you mean? Yeah, I love that, I'm back. I'm back, it's fine, it was like a rescue wheel.
Yeah.
That's what I was like. Um, I am motion to approve a contract extension for Bragton Bus Inc. for fiscal year twenty-seventh, fiscal year twenty-eighth, and fiscal year twenty-ninth.
Second.
Do you want to go over the discussion or Mr. Bragton? Mr. Bragton, do you wanna come up?
Sure.
Explain to us.
Sure you want. Thank you for seeing me up this way.
You gotta, yeah, you gotta, did you gotta look, yeah? Very good people, everybody can see.
We'll miss not seeing. Um, anyway, thank you guys for seeing me today, um, I had gone to the superintendent earlier this year and asked if we could have an extension for our contracts, um, we haven't put any numbers in, and the reason that we've done that is because we don't know what's gonna happen next month versus twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-nine. So in the past, we've always just let the years open to negotiate it all, depending upon school budgets, what our needs are, what your needs are. Reason we're doing, we're asking for this is, is it allows us to continue to update our equipment when we go for financials, and the banks are always asking how long their contracts are. And so that's the reason we're asking for it, um, just that we have the future that we'll be able to continue doing the busing that we have in the past. That's pretty much, pretty much everything, we appreciate everything that you guys have done for us. As you know, like anything else in the world, they could sit up here and tell you cost has gone up, wages have gone up, fuel has gone up, but everybody is experiencing the same thing. And the superintendent's very good at working with us and helping us when we can, and everybody's been working together very well. So, if you have any answered questions?
Does anybody have any questions or?
We just have a comment, that when we were in all the financial difficulties, Bruce came in with collaborate and helped us a lot. I think that, uh, we didn't want those kind of layoffs and things like that. He's always been over backwards, he's done anything that we asked him to do. I support him a hundred percent. I think we should give him the three-year extension. I appreciate everything that you do, Bruce, for the school and the communities.
Yeah, I appreciate that you guys do, because this is, this is, yeah, we, you guys are it. And I figure we all need to work together, and, um, the support that you guys have given the drivers over the past two years has been wonderful. I've been recognized as part of the staff at the school, which means a lot to them, it really does. They work very hard, and the bus aides that are on the bus are invaluable, we are the jealousy of the state of Maine having that. We really are, because it's, it's safety for the kids, it's safety for the drivers, and it really is. And when we go to meetings, they're so jealous that we're able to provide that for our kids.
Anything else, Bruce? There was no more discussion, all in favor? Five all?
Okay, can I?
Make a motion.
Motion to remove the following policies. B F F for purchasing school materials by individuals or organizations. And D L C expense reimbursement.
Anybody want to explain why we're removing the policies or anything, or just?
Yeah, I will, um, we did have a policy meeting, um, a, a week ago, so like I mentioned a few minutes ago. And these two policies are, um, they're duplicates for practices and procedures that we already have in place, and they're not required by M S M A, so, um, that's the reason why we're asking for them to be revoked.
Thank you. Any other questions, any other discussion? All in favor? Five all? Adoption of revised policies, voting, seventeen?
I move to approve the first reading of following new policies. E V annual budget, E V G budget adoption process, E V grants, E D, uh, B F A revenues from investments, D I fiscal accounting and reporting, B I D V's.
We jumped, we jumped one.
Hold it on that one, sorry. Move to adopt, uh, approve the following policies, use of physical, uh, J K A A, use of physical straighten seclusion, J K A A dash R procedures on physical straighten and seclusion.
I'll say it again.
Governor?
So again, these were discussed in our, um, recent policy meeting, and, um, these are required by M S M A, and they're, we looked at them because we had had them in place a number of years ago and made, um, minimal changes to any of them.
I'd like to make, uh, we have all of this.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Five all?
David, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of following the policies. Uh, D V annual budget, the, uh, B G budget adoption process, D V grants, the F A revenues from investments, D I fiscal accounting and reporting, D I D V inventories, D I E audits, financial monitoring, D M cash in school buildings.
Thank you.
I heard, I, I.
I did, because I'm not used to being.
I, I didn't know how to believe.
What?
Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Wish you would've stopped me before I went to the end of it.
It was nice of you to ask.
Your brush was well spoken twice.
So as the first reading, our policy committee, um, did review these, these are required by M S M A. They give us, um, suggestions with very little wiggle room, um, so for the most part, we accepted the M S M A policies as they were written.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Five all? First reading of revised policies, Julie?
Okay, motion to approve first reading of the following revised policies, the D I D fixed asset, E J bidding slash purchasing requirement, E J H staff code of conduct, E K C expense authorization and reimbursement, D L B tax sheltered annuities, D N school properties disposition, J L student wellness.
Please.
Motion?
And for the last time tonight, these policies were all discussed at our policy meeting, and again, these are all required by M S M A, and they pretty much give us a template, which we did not really, um, adjust much.
Like, uh, Doc, like you said, it was really not much wiggle, it might be a, a date, or maybe it's cash amount.
Right.
Any other discussion?
I guess, the, the one that we removed, the D L C, does this, E K T, does that? Isn't the same thing?
No.
Expence authorization and reimbursement. Plus the expense reimbursement.
So that was because it was a beautiful kit, so there were two that were pretty much covering the same thing, yes, definitely.
Any other discussion? The none, all in favor? Five all?
Now we get to listen for a few seconds, Paul.
Paul?
Oh.
Oh. Uh, senior board representative, Grayson Sanders?
Okay, so, uh, basketball season started, and both teams have already, already had three preseason games. Um, our first game will be this Friday, home against Finger, Finger Christian, and the boys have a scrimmage tonight against Dexter at six, I believe. Um, so I'm looking forward to this new season, especially being in class B. Um, durings mock trial, um, had a first round competition on November eighteenth, and is going, and went on to the second round this past Saturday, and we went against N D I and tier sport. Unfortunately, we'll be going on the states, but it was really fun, um, just having opportunity to go. Um, the craft there was also on Saturday, Friday and Saturday. Uh, the senior class raised money by, uh, selling our apple tickets and admission by donations. And we did really successful, so it was really good. And the freshman class raised money by selling, um, Mr. Chronic's book, Never Stop Venturing, number three.
Questions?
Uh, one question, Grayson, how would it feel to guide somebody six foot four?
It was hard.
You did a good shot.
Yeah, like she would be behind me and whack the ball in my hands. Yeah, um, and Haley has something to add about the marathon. Um, so this weekend, a junior class also sold, sold crops, lots of the crafter on Friday, and also went down to the dance scene the day of the marathon, and sold a lot of chocolate. And the sophomores also sold homing goods.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Administrative reports?
And Cody, um, wrote the report for you to read, and he anticipated being here tonight, um, but he needed to go on.
So please, Greg, Louis?
Just briefly, for me, we were able to get gym floor refinished, well, great, um, but weren't able to get it painted as we had hoped, because we were waiting for some materials to cover the sand the floor. Um, didn't show up in time to get the painting done, but we did use that time to get the banners hung in the gym that we took down from the summer. Um, got those all organized and rearranged, and, um, it's all moving, we moved some clocks and some lighting and, uh, made the walls look a lot neater, people were able to walk in and find their sport, find their year, find their banner a lot, a lot easier and quicker, uh. And the, was a big job, that, that came out great, um. As Grayson said, it was, uh, it was a busy weekend here, this past weekend with marathon, uh, but, uh, we handled that very well, covered the floor, the floor came out great after, we put the tarps down, and I always, I always hate to have to do that two weeks after we finished the floor, but, um, yeah, everything worked out, worked out well. I think we're pretty fortunate to be able to, to do all that here and provide the opportunities for the fundraising and, and all that in our building. We get a lot of, a lot of comments, and people are always pretty impressed with what we have in a little town.
I would say, uh, with, with the small staff you have, Louis, you do a great job, but that's, that's a lot of, a lot of people, that's all they see is Durham.
Yeah, yeah, there's that gym.
Yep. And represents the community and the school system.
Yeah, I'm glad we were able to put some extra effort in this year and have it kind of be more short piece than it always has been. People are always going away when they walk in and see, you know, a big gym for a little town.
Yeah, there's a lot of great comments that I read.
Yeah.
Online, that, uh, they say it's the best gym in the state, isn't it?
Well, it was on the, what, in, uh, at, uh, conference. It was last, right, it was. So, yeah, it was a really great.
Yeah, well.
It was nice, it was nice.
Yeah, so, any questions?
This kind of flips to another subject, but the, uh, our tournament, and I went to play it, it was just, I mean, our tournament is beautiful, it's another representation of our school. That people won't always see the school, and they see that, they see what a good dog, it's not keeping it clean and appropriate.
Yeah, there's not many schools that have the, what we have for equipment in there, and the big schools don't have, we were very fortunate through all of the avenues we had to pass some of that, but, yeah, yeah, we're very, very fortunate, yeah.
Louis, did you say you did not get a chance to paint the gym?
We didn't do the gym floor, we wanted to do blue around the, next, next year will, that'll be our priority.
Okay, so, so we'll have to wait till last?
So, yeah, to match the same shade of blue as, there's a, you know, scuffing and whatnot, we try to paint it every five years or so, and it's stupid for, you know, that's a purely aesthetic thing.
Because it still looks very good.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's far better than most schools you'll ever walk into, a lot of people, you know, have the bar set a little higher than most.
Yeah.
Okay, any other question?
Thank you.
Joanne is, um, out sick this week.
Yeah? Who's service?
Um, our teams at both schools put on a festive, uh, present, uh, turkey feast for all of our students. Uh, Ms. Mary helped serve in the kitchen, it was greatly appreciated, so turkey, mashed potatoes, the whole nine yards, even the little apple crisp, um, surprisingly, kids love creamery sauce. The whole nine yards, even the little apple crisp. Um surprisingly, kids love creamery sauce today. So that's been a night. Uh started prepared over a hundred and twenty pounds turkey. So I found them in Shake Your Tail at, so that's a good amount. Uh our new refrigeration unit that came in last month broken has not been repaired and serviced. So we're looking at getting, we deliver directly to Granite Street now instead of doing um like a shop. We have a staff member at the beginning of the year, Diane Palatier, who's really working at um putting out some scratch rescue stuff. A lot of testing over the last month. So we're going to reintroduce some of our homemade muffins. So she's really been working hard. It's been an amazing asset for our program. So excited about that. About our first reimbursement for our HMI grant. So things are moving along nicely. Um things in progress there. And uh we're serving on average like forty-nine more meals per day than we did in uh twenty twenty-two. So we're just chugging along, making small improvements and uh as we seem to be up. Any questions?
Do you have any idea why you're serving more meals? What what has changed then?
Um it's it's me, it's not me. You know, we just made a lot of small incremental changes over time that, you know, I think it changes. No, um. The flow, how things go in the in the cafeterias, um the new recipes. Kind of moving away from that process, we need to move to a home cook. You know, you get a little more flavor.
Um kids take more options.
Take more options. So I I really do think that it's just the little changes over time they add up. That's my guess. I have no.
Oh, no, no, sounds good. Sounds good.
Yeah.
It's nice to see you going back in that direction.
Yeah, hopefully over the next um two years with you, Mary. Get us back to that.
Maybe someone didn't know if they were waiting, you know, but I couldn't get them in. I didn't know who was in English. Thank you.
All right, where the first one?
Technology committee.
You'll learn a lot from him.
Oh, yeah, indeed.
Um I'd like to be extremely generous. I wanted to run Mr. Collins' report.
Sure.
He he wanted everyone to know that basketball season was underway, but that they hosted their first annual. Bob Bob worried round robin this past weekend. So we had Central Rursick and CS4 girls and boys teams for a great day of basketball. They unveiled the new scores table and received many compliments regarding it. Um and both schools loved that facilities and have already asked to come back next year. So I thought that was. Great, we are um, we've been hard at work looking at the bell schedule for the junior and junior and senior high school. Issues have been noticed um with the amount of high school students who are eating breakfast due to it. Happening before school started. We weren't seeing enough students eat breakfast. So we're going to make some adjustments, little adjustments to the schedule. We've already discussed with Mia. So that we can have high school breakfast during the day again. So we'll change back to that after our Christmas break. After the holiday. Um on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, we held our parent teacher conferences. And we had a great turnout for our middle school students, but it was very limited at the high school. So we have been kind of brainstorming and talking, trying to come up with some other ways to engage parents and have them come in. So one of the things that we're looking at is perhaps doing student garden conferences. Any questions on any of those? So my report's a little long, but I just wanted to inform everyone of some of the stuff going on around. Karate class, um we'll be having its first belt, which is yellow, grading for the students on December eleventh. Class is well attended by all eighteen students. Mr. McGibben teaches this class. And a reporter from the local press contacted him about doing an article. For um about the Sterns martial arts program. And so we'll keep you informed if we hear any more about that when it comes to fruition. In in a loom's classes, the trails bikes in gear, elective students are a few weeks into. Um their unit on bike maintenance. And so far, students know how to do the following. They know how to do their safety checks, um on the ground assessments, change a tire, replace the brake cables and housing. Adjust mechanical discs and rim brakes and remember the chain. So the class will be diving into ski waxing and repair next week and then returning to a deeper level. Bike mechanic skills in January. They're doing a great job in that class and the kids are having a lot of fun. With the high school outdoor ed, they've been doing an outdoor cooking unit. So they have built their own alcohol stoves out of fancy piece cap tins. Um and they'll be building coffee can stoves this week. So they will end up ni- this week actually, um having a potluck of meals prepared entirely on student created stoves. So they're following a stringent medical safety requirements for use of those stoves. Students in the English one-on-one dual enrollment class are well on their way to earning a college credit. For their eleventh grade English class. So they've just finished a unit on rhetorical analysis. And a close reading of narrative of the life of Frederick Douglass in moving into a personal narrative unit decks. And students in English four, and Miss Loon says, for lack of better words, a very energetic and hands-on bunch. Are hoping to design and propose an outdoor classroom as part of a real life writing unit. The class may be able to tie into grant funding and actually bring this project to fruition. Pending grant funding and approval through the school. That's something that the students have to come up with and that's something that they're very interested in making happen. So. We'll keep you posted on that. And Grayson had mentioned the high school mock trial team. I went down on Saturday to watch them in action. And if you didn't know that they were students, you would think you were in a real courtroom. You guys were amazing. You did a great job. So um. There were how many high school?
There's I think there's four.
Four high school and there were six or seven middle school.
Oh, wait, how many were there?
Yes.
Oh, there's like. Eight of us. And then there was like, you know, like four middle schoolers. Okay, and watch because they're about, they're gonna go on and be in mock town and so. Yeah.
They will. They couldn't have seen a better example. You guys were great. You were great. I watched you go up against. MDI and as far as I was concerned, Sterns won. So the um middle school STEM class that is um in Lord Wires class. They have presented two programming lessons to the Granite Street third grade classes using the Sphero robots. Received um as part of last year's state technology grant. And I hear that that went very well and the kids had a lot of fun teaching little ones. Middle school personal finance has just finished. This is with Mrs. Garcia. They've just finished their interviews for jobs. So they reviewed how to dress and how to behave on an interview. And they practiced shaking hands and answering interview questions. And so this is all done so they can be hired for a job that they picked from their career ceremony. They are starting to pay bills this week and develop a monthly budget. So they actually had to go and introduce themselves to Mrs. Booker. And she escorted them over to Mrs. Garcia to sit through an interview. And she was surprised at how nervous the students were, even though they knew everyone and. But they took it very seriously and they've been having a good time with that. The financial fitness fair happens tomorrow, which is exciting for our juniors and seniors. Um the Northern Penox Scott chapter of credit unions in conjunction with the main credit union league will be hosting this. And this will be for area high school seniors, also juniors. It will be held um tomorrow during the morning. The event will take place. Starting at nine and Tina JMo from the credit union first contacted me about this and we've been going back and forth. Other members of the credit union and everyone's very excited because they kind of. Went away during COVID like everything else did. And this is a really great experience for our students. There'll be a few college representatives there as well to give out any information to the interested student. And the um credit unions are also providing students and their teachers who are there with them with um some lunch. Tomorrow, so. We're really looking forward to it. We have Skank High School coming. We have Patten coming. We have Lee and. Central, I believe. So. Could be, should be a lot of fun for the kids. So. Um and then I added one more thing on because I think that it is very important and this is our only. December meeting. I just wanted to um announce that the Stay for Life. Nonprofit organization um has been putting up Trent's trees in seven locations across Maine. Including right on Main Street beside the municipal building. So Stay for Life works um to advocate for men's mental health awareness and suicide prevention. And they now have a tree up in seven different places across the state. So as part of my report, I've asked Mrs. Stevens if she could say a few words to explain a little more. About Trent's trees and about State for Life and what they represent.
Hi, guys. Um so I'll just kind of give you the lowdown and then if you have any questions, um I'd be happy to answer any of those questions you have. So um just a little bit about Stay for Life. So. We were established um in the summer of twenty twenty-two. Um after losing our nephew Trent um to suicide. It was, he was eighteen. It was two weeks after he graduated high school. Um and it was a shock to our entire family um and obviously quite devastating. So. His mom, Angela, who is a Sterns alum, she graduated in ninety-seven or ninety-eight. Um that would be my my husband's sister Angela. Um Trent was her son. So she decided that she wanted to um be active in trying to prevent this from happening to. Um anybody else. Um so she started with the little red magnets that are all over the school. Um I would say probably all of my middle schoolers know Trent's name, which is pretty special. Um so we decided we were going to start a nonprofit. There's four of us, uh Angela and her now husband, then fiance, Donnie. Um and my husband Josh and I um started our nonprofit. We are registered five oh one C three. And so last holiday season, Angela decided to put um a tree in her yard. It actually started in Trent's room, just as a way for family members to be able, like especially for like us up here in Millinocket. They live all the way down in Wells. So um she wanted us to be able to go through that grieving process as well. And so invited us to send some um some ornaments, maybe some some ornaments special to Trent to hang on the tree. Um and so we all did that and then um it occurred to her, like, you know, other people in in the neighborhood, you know, knew Trent very well. And they, you know, so she reached out to them. Yes, they wanted to send their ornaments as well to remember Trent. So it really started as a memorial for Trent. And then last year it grew into. Um people hanging, so she brought it out into the front yard and people came to hang ornaments. In memory of their loved one um that they lost to suicide. Um so that was really the the bulk of it last year and we ended with a hundred thirty ornaments on her tree in her yard. So that was pretty, pretty special and really helped her um and all of us really um through the holiday season, which can be very difficult, especially when you're grieving. Um the loss, like, you know, a loss like this. So this year as a nonprofit. Um we talked about, it started with only two or three trees that were going to be up in the state. And then uh with, you know, through our committee, we have um kind of like separate from our nonprofit, we have a a small committee. Um which is the four of us plus some other people that wanted to be involved with this project. Um so we decided on uh seven locations. So Millinocket is the most north location and Wells being the southernmost. Um there's a Trent tree at Alfonderina at the university. We will have a tree lighting ceremony um this Friday. And there's also one going up as we speak at Hussin University, which was supposed to happen Friday and then it was supposed to happen yesterday. So my daughter Lexi is a senior at Hussin and she's um working on that right now. Um and so basically what the tree is for is that people can um go to the tree. Hang an ornament in memory of their loved one that um died by suicide. Or they could hang an ornament in support of either themselves or somebody that they know that struggles with. Mental health challenges. Um and so. The response that we've had in just a few days has been overwhelming. Um overwhelmingly overwhelmingly positive um about the impact that it's having. So um that's pretty cool. Um so we we put up our tree in Millinocket on Thursday night. Um and it was just my husband and I and his mom and dad who have been divorced since the kids were little and. They worked on it together, so that was pretty special as well. Um and then I went down to the university on Friday. And I came back Friday evening to check on the tree here in town and it was already so full. I couldn't believe it. So it shows that, to me, it shows that we're all impacted by by mental health. And lots of people are impacted by suicide, but it's sort of like. One of those things that's not talked about a lot. Um there's a lot of stigma that goes with suicide sometimes. So um it it's hard. For a lot of families who have gone through that. Um it's hard to to even talk about. So we've heard feedback from people that even hanging the ornament on the tree has provided an opportunity for conversation. Um to open up. And so that's pretty special as well. That that was sort of something we hadn't even really considered. Um but we've received that feedback. So it's been awesome so far and uh we're hoping next year that will, it will grow even more. So. So, yeah. So if you guys have any questions, I'll take it. But we're, our nonprofit's called Stay for Life. Um so we do have a website and a Facebook page and Instagram page and a TikTok and all this other stuff, right? So.
All right. Thank you, Margot.
Absolutely. Thank you.
How are you doing?
Thank you for listening, guys.
Thank you so much.
We talked about the uh. Two young people gave a presentation and they turned it school on. And we thought any more about that?
Um no, actually, we have like a new kid that learned that um.
I was looking at my information that I got from the conference.
Granite Street principal, your lady Mary?
There's a few things um on our report that I've added since I. Read the rest of the report. Um we had a table full of volunteers from Granite Street at the craft fair raising money for our field day. And they raised one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-five thousand. It's a lot of it was because they had kids go well with.
Laurel, I was one of them.
Yeah, they hit me up.
It hit me too. Um so that was wonderful for our field day um money. And uh I also wanted to just um give an update. Uh I noticed that. Beth talked about parent teach conferences. We had a really good turnout. I don't have exact numbers because we have some teachers who are doing makeup with. Beth talked about parent teach conferences. We had a really good turnout. I don't have exact numbers because we have some teachers who are doing makeup with. Parents. By the end of the week, I should have amounts of how many parents actually came to our conferences, but we had pretty good turnout. And I'll also have your monthly visit. I have a couple of teachers that haven't finished yet, so I will ease them to. I've been attending PLCs, which is a learning community. With the teachers every morning. They have different grade levels and I've been doing that since the beginning of the year. It's just a great way for me to get to know the staff. In a smaller setting and get to get a better idea of what's happening at each grade level each week. And so that's been a great opportunity. I've also been in the classroom on a regular basis. Sometimes it's just a quick walkthrough as I drop things off or check in. Um, but recently I've been able to do a lot more sitting down and talking to the kids and working with them in small groups. Now that some of the grant work and things like that has been taking to get it off. Um, I've set out two truancy letters. Those are for only when students have unexcused absences to a certain amount. But what I found when I went through that data, there's a lot of students who are missing ten percent of more of their days, even though they're excused absences, which means parents can say they're sick. But they have a doctor's appointment or whatever. So um, over the weekend, I started creating some love personalized letters to each of those parents. Then up to forty-five parent letters that we sent out into the week. Just saying that, you know, we've noticed your child's missed many days and we want to know if there's anything that we can do to help with attendance issues. If you want to have a meeting. And I've been at the PLC this week. I'm talking to each of the grade levels so they can give me input about. What kind of things that those students have missed by having that many days out throughout the trimester. So they really see what the impact is individually. On their child where they miss school. Upcoming events, we have the re-ceremony thanks to the um, rock department for the beautiful wreath that they donated and Katie Keans for all the students. Um, this week boulder grades and connecting with younger grades to a craft. So the teacher to coordinate that. So at some point. Um, throughout this week, every class will be working with a younger level class to do an ornament or some kind of craft personally. We're having um, some fun dress up days the weeks of the eleventh through the fourteenth. That have listed there. We have the concerts coming up at the auditorium on the eighteenth for K through two and the nineteenth for three through five. The first and second graders are going to go visit the nursing home and sing to them and um, have little treats for them. And then Santa's coming to visit all students on the twenty-first. Um, I've added some data at the bottom there for you guys about the main through the year. That's the testing that state requires, third, fourth, and fifth grade. And they changed kind of the categories from the fall times to the spring times. So that just gives you an idea of the difference and, and includes. How many students and the percentage that means for each class um, in each of those categories. And I also included some I ready information about reading and I forgot to do the math, so I will fit that to you as well. Because that's another assessment that we do kindergarten grade. Any questions?
You talked about. Ten percent of missing time. Do the grades correlate with missing time?
That doesn't always because some kids learn, you know, even when they miss a lot of school. But um. It was six days that they know six days that they added to ten percent. So if I went up from there.
Is there a certain, because I know they have credit for all the school. Yeah, it's both those are the days, right?
Well, that's at the high school level and that is subject to school policy. They put the percentage on the grade school kids before cards to like track how long, how many. How much percentage they've been out per trimester to give the parents kind of a gauge. And there's like a notation there, you know, students who have missed more than ten percent. Show significant. You know, learning. Hindrances as opposed to their peers.
And the teachers often will write a note like this student that's really fallen behind and say, you know, this is due to absences. And we've also been trying to really boost attendance by like early release day because we know sometimes that's when a lot of people don't come to school. They get it's a half day. They don't need to. Some of them do a competition where if they have hundred percent um, attendance in their classroom, we take their picture and put it up on College Board, put on Facebook. So that seems to have been increasing our early release day.
Very, very. We're going to start with Rhonda. She has a couple of things to share from the business office.
Um, I attended a uh, a company stable training for the day on the twenty-seventh of. November, a really good rating, very helpful. Um, our grants are on track and up to date. I'm actually invited to order through. Past forms, October through current now. So we have just a couple of that where according to July on through, but everything else is right on track. Well, that's good. All the performance reports are in. Um, I've got a couple of ones to complete, but we're all completed and we're actually looking like we're on track. And our APs and twenty-three are all caught up. I said discover one, but they're all caught up.
Thank you.
Good news. Thank you.
Alright, um, I just wanted to say that we uh, did welcome Julie today. We had a, a meeting in um, our, my office earlier. To just kind of talk about the board norms and it was nice to have Julie come in. And I have to say she was one minute early.
Yes, sixty seconds.
Turned over newly. I brought a pen as well. I don't know if anybody has been to the old meeting, but I have my own. I also wanted to just use this opportunity as we welcome Julie to thank Tom for his many years of service and knowledge that he shared with us. Yeah. Um, I also wanted to say that um, a couple of weeks ago on a Friday, we had our OTPT and speech files all reviewed. Um, looking specifically for identification of students to see if there were too many, too few, to see if the process was done um, well. And it looks like it was done well. Um, I too was going to mention that Santa's gonna join um, Granite Street on the twenty-first. Uh, Santa and two elves actually. And that's a pretty exciting um, thing because the town actually called and asked if uh, there was room for Santa and elves. And there's a gift going to be given to the students. So it's another um, town school cooperative. Um, so that's kind of cool. And I also wanted to mention that Willie Wonka, I saw large crowds, uh, cheers and excitement from the audience. Um, and a few details are that um, they started our auditions the first week um, on after school started. And they did three shows, November sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. I asked if there was a number so that we could see how many people were in attendance. But I, I don't have that. Um, did you know that?
From the treasure of the boosters?
Yeah, for how many tickets?
Yeah, I can get Matt to.
That's what I was wondering. Um, just for the board's um, information because we compare that perhaps to some of our. Um, other events like particularly sports. So um, that's why I was curious. And so fifty-two students were involved and that's all the way from grade five, come up to the junior and senior high school. And there were many rehearsals Monday through Friday for acting, uh, tech crew, music and choreography. Which was, is also awesome because it's more than the people who are just on the stage. There's a lot of people in the background that make. Um, the show be so wonderful. And I also wanted to say that this note also mentioned that um, both Danielle and Matt. Truly enjoyed putting this on and also thank all of their volunteers. Um, it's just, I don't know if you realize it, but I've only been here for the two years and it really is magnificent. So. I just wanted to give the details because you know the details of the football, right? You know the details of you go to a basketball game, but. So I appreciate, I appreciate them being mentioned.
The blueberry.
Violet, you're turning violet, Violet.
Look at all the hard work that uh. Matt and Danielle put in and the whole group.
Yeah.
But it's, it's amazing. I, 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 like I said, it's probably most culture I get all year. I enjoy one of the boys and these people don't go, they should go and support the students. So not everybody plays basketball.
Right.
Not everybody plays football.
And you're right, we did really can be proud of our auditorium. It's uh, you right from the beginning when it's Matt's voice that tells you. You know about, you know, where the exits and things are. If you've ever been to a production, um, it's the same thing. It's like the same speech. And I'm like, ooh, that's awesome. Like our little school is so professional in that respect. Um, we did have our first traditional snow day yesterday for um, all the students who love a snow day. Um, so there'll be one more traditional one, I'm sure, this winter. And then after that, there'll be um, a couple of virtual ones. Which both schools have um, packets or plans um, for those. And Mia and I, actually, we were talking today about getting our meal ready for that. Did they remember from a meeting ago? Um, we're able to count those days as long as we do a meal and then apply for the waiver from the state actor. So those, those should work out just fine. And I also wanted to say again, on the um, marathon uh, time with the, I guess it's all called the craft there. There is a table also where they collect um, not only donations of, of money for the, um, the performing arts program. But also instruments. And so this year's list of instruments, get this, I was impressed. Oh man, there was a flute. A complete drum set, a trumpet, an electric guitar, an acoustic guitar, a French horn, music stands and a bunch of recorders. And a couple from Farmington said that they're going to give a clarinet, a trumpet and a, and a violin. But they wanted to make sure that it indeed was something that the performing arts wanted. You add this to last year's where they got a saxophone, um, trombones, the drums and guitars. And um, Zapta, some of the repairs on these, all instruments are right up to, you know, the ability to play them right away. But between what Matt can do and the people that work with him, um, it costs a little bit of money for some of the instruments. But that's such, that's an incredible list. And the opportunity there for students to try various instruments. Before they actually like have to purchase or rent something. So I, I didn't want that detail to go unsaid. Because that's a, that's a pretty amazing way to um, to do that. And that's what I have.
Anybody have any questions? I can just jump on one other thing. At the Veterans Program. Uh, Mr. Biquin had the, the band. It was a big band we'd had in years. And it was nice to see so many. And I thought it was, you know, it's a beginning. It's a, it's a process. I thought he did a very good.
And that's middle school and high school too. We've been really successful with this program of, part of the reason that you're seeing the band grow. Is because um, Zach took on this project, brought it to the booster in the board and uh, we have been able. Successfully to set up a couple of students, both who have taken, I mean, we have a, a boy that walks in rain, snow, sleet. Zach will say, I, you'll have to meet me this morning to take lessons. Nope. He will walk there. Um. He loves his trumpet, loves his trumpet. And we are able to move away from what we're currently doing, which is uh. Installment agreements for the first six months with the, with David French Music, who does our. And now with these donations, the last two years, we've, oh my God. So everything else is just gravy. The instruments alone are worth staying there for. And. Yeah. So we are, we hope to be able to do a lot more of that.
They're pretty impressive.
It's awesome. Yeah.
I just had one thing before, uh, I talked before about driving that at Sterns High School.
Yes.
We've got the okay to go forward. We're gonna have to have a classroom or something, the plastic place. Um, so I don't know if they can get the carcass room or something like that. Um. I don't know if everyone knows Lydia Archball. She's taken people's names down. And she will be uh, will be enrolling them. It'll be all paid for. They won't take her anything. Um, I just wanted to mention that. It's in the process. If we've already talked to Veal or they're in the process of talking to Veal Driving School. Uh, so it's like six hundred dollars. We'll, we'll be putting that. So that's a good thing. We'll be enrolling. When we find the people on the adwords watching them in the.
Sure.
To do enrollments right here. Probably the easiest way.
Yeah, that's excellent.
And I wanted to thank um, Mrs. Tocrey Rico and Mrs. Buzzle for distributing some Thanksgiving baskets. From the solidarity house for me. Um, I hope they got out to the, to the families and they all had a great Thanksgiving. So I just appreciate their help. They come down every year and pick them up and deliver them for me and that's, that's a big help.
Anybody else? Motion to go into executive session? For those on Zoom, we're going into executive session. You will be placed in a waiting room. And after the executive session, we will bring you back out. Thank you. Merry Christmas. Hope everybody has a very merry Christmas.
I got this.